Our Board Secretary A is out of office, so Dr. Breagan can wear two hats today.
I don't know.
Yeah, roll call, please.
Mr. Shi?
Here.
Mr. Mohan Patel? Ms. Pang?
Here.
Ms. Conway?
Here.
Dr. Chen?
Here.
Ms. Podolsky?
Here.
Ms. Madagor?
Here.
Ms. White?
Here.
Mr. Bureau Patel?
Bureau's not going to make it, it's not feeling well, so.
Okay.
And Mohan, it'll be a little late. Opening statement, the New Jersey Open Party Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the S and Board of Education has called notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place they are posted in the Board of Education administrative offices. Copies of these notices were sent to the Home News Tribune and the Star Ledger on January 5th, 2021. The public may participate at regular meetings in accordance with the bylaws and applicable state regulations. So, all right, so we're going to go through our agenda items. Dr. Breagan, take it over.
Sure. First up, we had was a public hearing on the Violence and Vandalism Report that's contained in the agenda there. As you can see, there are not many incidents of violence or vandalism. It's something we have to report on a biannually basis, which is twice a year. So, the reporting you see there is from January 1st of 2021 to June 1st of 2021. There's not really much discussion there because for the first three months, we were totally remote, and for the remainder of the year, from March 1st until the end of June, we only had a small portion of the students that attended onsite on a regular basis. So, I don't think those numbers are great for comparison, or they are significantly lower than they would normally be at this time. So, in accordance with the code, we have to have a hearing on that. The data is submitted there for acts of violence and vandalism, for a total of five. If there's any discussion on that, on that particular thing?
Yeah, we have a, because this is the, you know, public hearing, so people have any comments for violence and vandalism, you can come to the podium. Violence and vandalism only. See none? We're going to move on. Dr. Breagan?
Okay, if we go to the resolutions there, there's a number that I'll walk through. There's a ratification of the memorandum of agreement with the custodial and maintenance unit for approval on that. It's a five-year contract that the negotiations committee worked hard, with the negotiations committee from that unit, and we're putting forth that memorandum of agreement. Next up is a resolution recognizing American Education Week, November 15th to the 19th. This happens to be the 100th year of celebrating American Education Week. And then after that, there's approval of the Emergency Virtual Instruction Plan as required by the State Department of Education. Should this pandemic reemerge and necessitate that we have a fully remote instructional program, we have to have a program in place for the state's approval, and that's contained in this agenda, and will be a resolution to approve that. After the approval, we submit it to the Department of Ed. It's basically similar to when we were fully remote for those periods of time last year, same schedules. After that, you'll see there's three resolutions related to our hockey program, approving the cooperative that we've had for a long time, approving the memorandum of understanding with our parents, as well as approval for the hockey rink rental agreement. After that, we have our memorandum of agreement with Middlesex College, and I think what's worthy of note there, whether you're in our early college program or taking any dual enrollment courses at Middlesex College, whether it's two credits, three credits, or four credits, the total cost is $125, which is a significant savings than it would be if you went to enroll in the course, you know, as a student upon graduation. So, that's great, and we're really excited about that partnership. There's also an approval for a company called Right at School for before and after-school services. Right now, that's to provide any additional services that currently the Recreation Department cannot handle. We did hear from our PTOs, there was a bit of a backlog, and they were overloaded in some areas, not due to space, which somebody mentioned at one of our recent board meetings, but due to personnel. So, we're approving another vendor to provide that service if the need is there. School bus emergency evacuation drill, they have to be conducted twice a year, and what's contained on the agenda is, and they have to be approved. Those are the ones that have taken place so far, and the approval for those bus routes that were evacuated under the supervision of an administrator at the school should an emergency occur are listed therein. Approval of the YMCA service agreement for the Edison High School and John P. Stevens swim teams. We need to have pools and the rental agreements for use of the pool. And then the last one under that is the policies that were introduced at our last meeting. This is a second reading for those new and revised policies. Under curriculum instruction, as traditionally like we normally would, is approval of our student field trips, as well as our professional development for staff. Pupil services, we have our added district placements that gets updated on an annual, on a monthly basis, as well as our professional services agreements for those related services. Approved vendors that we're adding to our already list of approved vendors for 2021 and 2022 school year. Do you want me to go right to finance?
Yes, please.
Can I ask a few questions?
Yeah, sure.
So, I just had questions on the Emergency Virtual Instruction Plan. My first question is, the five points for quarantining students, does that remain the same, or has anything changed?
Could you speak into the mic, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry. So, my first question is regarding quarantining of students and staff, we have five points there on page two. Are they the same as before, or has anything changed?
It's the same, nothing's changed.
It's the same, okay. The second question I have is if somebody is, because I imagine now you're providing like a full day of remote instruction, right? And not just the one hour?
Correct.
So, my question is if somebody is sick, not because of COVID, but you know, maybe broke a bone or something else, does this apply to them also? Can they also join into this remote instruction?
It's a great question. If somebody was on a traditional home instruction for illness, or as you said, a broken bone or leg or arm, or God forbid, anything else, they would be entitled to traditional home instruction, right? Which would be for special needs students, two hours per day, generally it's students one hour typically, depending if there was different circumstances. But what that plan is really geared towards, if the district had to be fully remote, so then that student would get remote instruction for the full day, as if they would with all the other students.
Okay, so this is just if the whole district goes remote for three days?
Correct.
Then students are going to get this?
Correct.
Okay, so I misunderstood.
In case of a state of emergency where we would have to go fully remote, the state wanted us to make sure we had a plan in place that we could transition to, you know, from our experience in the last 18 months, you guys are well aware, that wouldn't be that difficult for us at this point.
Okay. And then, I think just one more thing, it says for students who attend in person, establish attendance policies. I think these need to be updated, they're not updated on the website.
Fair enough, okay. We'll take a look at it.
That's all. And just one question on the Middlesex classes, does this apply also to summer classes, or this is just for credit completion or for the associate's degree?
That's a really good question. Some of the summer classes, I know students take those classes in order to catch up with some classes they may not have taken. I have to follow up on that, I don't want to misquote it.
Okay.
I want to say I think so, but let me find out for sure.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Dr. Breagan for curriculum before we move on, you know, and the other stuff before we move on to finance? None? Okay, Dr. Breagan.
Okay, and the finance resolutions, you'll find, there's a number of things there. Obviously, approval of the minutes, the investment report, traditional monthly report of the Board Secretary, and the report of the Treasurer of School Monies. Contained within there are a number of financial resolutions, and the first one is a number of account transfers, just to balance out the accounts according to the utilization. After that, there is special education, special, special Olympics grants for $20,000, $10,000 for J.P. Stevens High School, and $10,000 to Edison High School. Kudos to the team for putting that together and their supervisor of health and physical education. There's acceptance of the S R 2 grants, which we applied for, and that's an acceptance of the monies, approximately $4.7 million. There's also acceptance of the IDEA, American Recovery, Recovery Plan Grant, A R P, for approximately $900,000. We're denying the tent rental bids, not because we don't want them, because they came in significantly over budget when we put the bid out, and they also weren't able to accommodate all of the schools that we wanted the tents for. So, I think Mrs. Madagor mentioned at the last meeting, we're trying to see what the feasibility would be for us to buy our own structures and have them somewhat permanent at the schools, and we're still looking into that. The problem is there's a lack of availability for construction materials and things right now, there's a shortage everywhere. So, unfortunately, I don't think I'll get a quick turnaround, but that's what we're doing on that now. There's an approval for the late bus bid, for to provide late bus services to our schools. There's an approval for the co-op bid for gasoline and diesel prices, which we traditionally do. We're also approving the use of Monmouth Ocean Ed Services Commission for transportation routes. Our first resource is to go to the Ed Services Commission of New Jersey, which is mostly geared towards Middlesex County, but sometimes, especially with the shortage, they can't accommodate those requests. So, we're looking to seek approval to use Monmouth Ocean Ed Services Commission as well. There's two change orders for the Lincoln addition. At this time, whenever there's a change order into the project that we've signed on for, we have to get board approval. Those change orders are related to plumbing and steel, and at this point, there's no increase in price for either one of those. And for the plumber services, they've actually changed vendors to have a local vendor provide that service. There's a resolution for non-public technology initiative programs allocation, which is typically reduced for the non-publics or afforded certain monies from the state and federal government that transition through the district. This happens to be for technology for one school. We have a list of our obsoleted items that are no longer of use, and then we have our approvals for electronic transfers and the bills list. Now, you notice the electronic transfers is something new, because we typically would pay these bills through traditional bill payments, but now that we have electronic transfers, we put that on for board approval as well. And then the transportation report, this, the routes that were both rescinded and the route renewals that were approved. That's all I have, Mr. Board President.
Not bad, not bad, good job. Okay, now, we are open for board member comments, any board member comments? So, we're going to start from that side, Shivi?
I just had a question for Dr. Breagan, what's the update on, what's the update on transportation?
Well, that's a really good question, and I'm sure that's on a lot of people's minds, so thank you, Ms. Madagor. Currently, right now, all those transportation students who didn't have transportation due to those dropped 50-plus routes in the beginning of September, they're all being transported now. So, what the mission is now, and the eight buses that we rented from the Somerset Ed Service Commission are in use as well. So, that helped us combine some routes for the smaller buses to larger buses, and our transportation department, as well as our bus drivers, has been really great in trying to accommodate all those. Right now, they're attacking the subscription busing routes, and that's basically those people that apply for subscription busing, which as you know, is if you're within the prescribed distances where we're required to transport, you put in subscription, and if there's room on the buses, we will get you that service. And we're going through those right now. We had almost 2,000 requests for there, so that's where we are now.
2,000 requests?
Yeah, about that.
Okay, and would you have any, any idea about when?
You know, a number of parents have asked that, and you know, I probably have a more definitive number, perhaps next Tuesday, because our supervisor is coming on Monday, and we're going to meet with him actually tomorrow to go over things. And you know, Mr. Benedict's doing a great job, but he's doing a bunch of different things at one time. So, right now, we're in a triage mode, which is dealing with the most pressing problem first. I'll try to get a definitive answer for our meeting on Tuesday with the timeline.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Okay. Dr. Chen? Okay, Chen?
No.
Sure, yes, thank you. Board President, and first of all, I want to thank Superintendent Dr. Breagan in the tremendous job you're doing with the transportation as well. We're just six, six weeks into the school year, and to accommodate for what has happened nationwide, it's tremendous that you're doing a great job on that right now. And we could do better, but we will continue to do that. Second of all, I want to congratulate Woodrow Wilson Middle School for being the number one in the district, and also being recognized as the 29th in the nation out of 844 schools to be in top 50, right? So, first of all, I want to congratulate them basically, and great job by the principal, Ms. Blevins, and the vice principal, Ren, Ren DeRita? And the staff, absolutely, and the staff as well, and the kids and the parents as well. So, that's it for me, for now. I know I'm very quiet today.
Mrs. Cowan?
Thank you, Mr. Shi. I just wanted to give my plug, since the last meeting, I attended the J.P. Stevens Band Festival, and as usual, it was a phenomenal event, and my hat goes off to all the staff and the students that participated that evening. It was a great turnout, and as usual, our two schools were way above the others in my mind. They were all excellent, but of course, I'm prejudiced. So, I thank all the people that had attended that day, and hearing what other parents had to say from other districts, J.P. Stevens and Edison High have such a fabulous, what's the word I'm thinking of? Reputation, thank you.
That's it?
Yes.
Okay, Carol?
I did not get to attend the J.P. Stevens Band Competition or the Edison High this year, but at least with J.P. Stevens, I feel the percussion in my living room whenever they're out there practicing or performing. So, I always get to experience it. And we used to just think there was something wrong with our house when we first moved in, until my daughter was in the band, and then I said, oh, she's at band practice, that's where the drum line is, straight line to my house. So, and the other thing I wanted to mention was, I don't want to be, American Education Week, which was always one of my favorites when I was home just being a parent before I came back to work, because that was our chance to go in and see what was really happening in the classrooms. I don't know in today's conditions whether that will happen, but it always is a nice time to celebrate public education, and the purpose of American Education Week is to honor the individuals working to ensure that every student receives a quality education, which they do here because of our staff, all of our staff, and our families, and our students. But I noticed tonight, we were approving a lot of different resolutions about things like the ice hockey parents, the Middlesex College providing college courses in our school, the new group providing before and after care, and all these different things, and the buses that have come together, and now we're having busing, effective busing for our students. It, as they say, it takes a village to raise a child, and there's been a lot of groups, and they all just happen to be in the agenda, maybe to highlight American Education Week, I don't know. But it just caught my eye that there's so many different groups that take an active role in educating our students, not just those of us here, and it's a good thing because there aren't too many of us here tonight, but it's one of my favorite times of the year, because all we're doing is saying that the students, the parents, the teachers, the bus drivers, the YMCA, all those groups, and the ice hockey, because I remember students of mine that were in that first group that did that. It's everyone in this town pulling together for the schools, and that's what makes it great, and everyone in this country. So, I love American Education Week, even if I don't get to go in and visit the classrooms.
Hi, I have to echo Mrs. Conway, that was my first band festival, and I loved it. It was just beautiful. J.P. Stevens, they were excellent hosts, they did a beautiful job. Their choreography and their music was outstanding. Edison took the prizes, they were just, you know, they were just as good. But I have to say that the parents of these kids, you know, the parent groups are just phenomenal, they work so hard. I mean, that's an all-day function, and they are there from the beginning to the end. I mean, you just can't say enough good things about those parents. And they, you know, they support their children, and the children are so lucky to have them. But while I'm doing this, I do want to mention J.P. Stevens volleyball, okay? We have Laurel Sicaria, she is leading an all-time assists, she's the leader in the county, or in the state, I believe, 1,506 assists, and that was against Piscataway, and that was as of October 8th, and we're still counting because they're still playing, and she's still doing magic. So, that's it for me, thank you.
Thank you. So, I have to echo, you know, both of them for the band. I think four, four or five of us were there, Mohan was there, Mrs. White, Mrs. Conway. Shivi, were you there?
Band Festival?
Yeah.
No.
Oh, okay. Yeah, so, you know, it's not only in your mind, Mrs. Conway, Edison School was good. They actually won the prize, right? The Edison High School won the biggest prize, the overall performance of that day, and they won two other categories, I think. So, you know, the investment that we've put into these arts program really paid off. You just hear the beautiful music. J.P. Stevens is the host, so they're not getting a, you know, they're not getting awarded for that, but it's a great program. I actually have five questions, and Shivi took one of the questions about the transportation, so Dr. Breagan, you only have four questions, okay?
All right.
Okay. So, the two questions are very related. This is about the fields in our school, especially about Woodrow Wilson Fields, the soccer field. I actually was there over the weekend, it was not flat, and it was a lot of uneven, and the kids were playing soccer over there, I think the kids got hurt when they were playing there. And also, this is also related to the folks who play cricket. When I was there, I saw the goalposts got moved to the end, and we have seen pictures from the principal that the goalposts has been just flipped over and so on. So, this is a question about that, you know, comments about the field, about the cricket teams, okay? And the other two questions is the clubs, and actually, the people, when we actually have a meeting on Tuesday, you will see we have a lot of appointments for the clubs in the schools. And it says why participation is reduced to one in elementary and middle. It's with a big student population, a big interest, it's a little bit hard, you know, the people want to get into more of these clubs, okay? The third, the fourth question is about pickup and drop-off, and we had a lot of complaints from parents about the safety concerns with the students, especially, you know, during pickup and drop, drop-off time. I was in Ben Franklin, I think, three weeks ago, or a month ago, when I was dropping the stuff, that was right at the, starting of the pickup time, and I saw some of the cars that's parked, that's not what they're supposed to be. So, if you can comment on that about the pickup and drop-off, the club participation and the field, especially in Woodrow Wilson.
Sure, great. You know, well, this year, the school system took over a lot of the coordination with the cricket teams, and I think we had about 60 teams that were using our fields in a variety of locations, including the field at Woodrow Wilson Middle School. So, we do need to have a meeting, we actually have a meeting scheduled with some of the representatives from the teams, as well as our cricket committee to go over, you know, after the seasons have gone on, and they've taken place to get some feedback in some of the things that we have heard about at Thomas Jefferson Field, as well as at Woodrow Wilson. Is some of the field status as far as the goals being moved and not put back, maybe some of the trash has been left around and not necessarily cleaned up, and you know, some of those things regarding the field use. And we want to have our fields available for our community, they are our fields, meaning the entire communities, but they have to take care of them, and they have to make sure we're not compromising any of the field space for our students, which is our ultimate goal. So, I'm happy that we are having a meeting, I know the cricket team, the cricket committee, we talked about that, and we're going to meet with the representatives from the teams, and we'll address those concerns, and I'm sure that will be, be able to come to a successful resolution. Regarding the field, particularly at Woodrow Wilson Middle School, I think that warrants our attention, and I think that's something we want to talk about at a Finance and Facility Committee meeting, if we want to look at some long-term investments there, such as potential irrigation with sprinklers and things like that, because the grass, it's a large area, if you know that area, you know, it abuts back up to the woods that lead to the Woodbrook Elementary School, and it's mostly crabgrass. And if you know anything about crabgrass, and I'm not a landscaper by any means, but it kind of grows in clumps, and there's no way to make it even. So, when the kids are running around for soccer or for cricket or other sports activities at phys ed, there is a potential there, you know, to twist an ankle or do something like that. So, I think it's worthy of a discussion, I think that's a larger discussion than I could weigh in on, but we bring it to the Finance Committee, see if they want us to explore an option for that field to get irrigation, and then we can seed it properly and maybe have a level playing field, if that's possible, I think we should have that discussion on that. Regarding the clubs, that's, that's, it's been an ongoing concern. The elementary schools typically have between five and eight clubs, you know, some of the clubs are like yearbook and things like that, and they're standard every year, but, and then we also have the opportunity to have a few pilot clubs each year where you can pilot out a different club, and if it gets a certain degree of participation, it then transitions to a type A club. But there aren't enough clubs for all the students that want clubs, so we try to limit it to one student, because if Bernie wanted to take participation in all five of the clubs that I had an interest in, that would then not allow Jerry to participate, or Shivi or someone else, because I was in five of those clubs. So, we do try to limit it because of the limited availability of clubs to one club per person, so that more students can have access to those activities. So, we'll look into that, though, and I did hear there's some inconsistencies that all the schools don't do it the exact same way. So, I think that's something we want to look at to make sure we're all doing it the right way, and we're doing it the same way, because we don't want someone saying, well, at this school, I can participate in three clubs, and this one, I can only participate in one. So, we'll take a look at that. But really, the idea, if we could somehow in the future, work with the board and the association, the Teachers Association, and maybe develop more clubs and fund those, if there's more interest, more opportunities, I think that's something worth exploring as well. And I think the last one was the drop-off and pickup. You know, one of the problems with drop-off and pickup is we have a lot of students and a lot of staff coming to our buildings, and often on roads that have one way in and one way out, right? Herbert Hoover Middle School, Jackson Avenue, Woodrow Wilson, Woodrow Wilson Drive, Grove Avenue, there's one way in and one way out, for the most part, for John P. Stevens High School, right? JMI Complex, all three of those schools, you got one road in, one road out, and it creates a traffic issue and a traffic pattern that's a problem for many of our schools. That's been exacerbated this year because of the busing shortage and transportation issues that we had that put more parents in cars driving their students to school. So, we're trying to manage all that, and within that is some of the dismissal procedures for some of our schools. We had to change slightly depending on the traffic, it would take longer or shorter than it normally would because of the increased number of cars and people. So, we'll look at that, and that's really a school-by-school basis, because every school is different, right? Lincoln Elementary School, the drop-off and pick-off is going to be very different than Ben Franklin, just because of the access and how you can get your child to and from the school. So, we'll review it with the principals. If parents have a concern or an issue, their first line of, their first person they should talk to would be the building principal. And I think maybe we should look at doing it this way, doing it that way, either directly to the principal or through the PTOs, and we'll try to come up with solutions that work best for everyone, that we can get all of our kids, our students, and staff into school safely, get them home as safely as we can.
Thank you. And the other thing that, you know, I saw some comments about getting police to work with the schools and stuff like that. The issue is that, you know, first is crossing guards. We don't have enough crossing guards, I think there's 60 spots, and at one point, police only had like 30 people at patrol at one time, or something like that. So, that's shorthanded to start with, just for crossing guards, and to tell them to get on additional duty to work in the parking lot, it's a little bit tough for them. So, you know, just Dr. Breagan said, we're working with the principals and try to see if we can, you know, make it a little bit better.
Yeah, that's a great point, though, Board President Shi, too. We're also working with the police, Sergeant Turner, as well as now Deputy Chief Dudash, on working and getting more crossing guards, and one of the things they requested was, could they meet with and have access to some of our lunch aids that work during the middle of the day, that maybe have availability in the mornings and afternoons? And we did facilitate a few of those meetings already, and they didn't get 20 new crossing guards, but they got one or two, so that's a step in the right direction as we move forward. And if anyone got a chance to watch on News 12 yesterday, you know, our SRO officer, Detective Williams at John P. Stevens High School, is known as the Dancing Police Officer, and she's directing traffic on Grove Avenue. If you didn't get a chance to, check that out on Google.
Oh, really? Okay, I'll check that out. That's good to them. All right.
Jerry?
Yes?
Just one follow-up question on the Emergency Virtual Instruction. The three-day closure, what would trigger it? The three-day closure, what would trigger it? And then I have another question, which is, would it be district-specific or school-specific? And my third question is, could we, could we have multiple three-day closures?
Yes, yes, and yes, no, I'm kidding. Any closure, no matter what it is, is one day, two day, three day. Obviously, if it's something that's more significant and longer, that would be depending on the impact of the virus in the community. And we would take direction from the state and local officials for that. A shorter thing would be dependent on the rate of exposure and the rate of the spread of the virus within the schools, if we considered it a school outbreak. And that would necessitate a close, that we would do that in consultation with the Department of Health. And we work really closely with J.L.A.'s office. If we saw that that was happening, we would, obviously, I would talk to the Board of Ed, but we would do that on a school-by-school basis. Because if the issue is centralized, let's pick a school to, you know, John Marshall Elementary School, it doesn't make sense to close JMI because of that, right? We haven't experienced anything similar to that, that would even come close to that, but it's there in case that happens.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Okay. All right, any other board members' comments? Okay. See, now we're open up for public comments, okay? So before we actually open up for public comments, just, let me just reiterate that they have six minutes, or six minutes of your time. And there's no back, back and forth negotiations here, okay? So you ask your comments, you ask your questions, we'll answer your questions, okay? One person at a time, and that's it. So Maria?
Hi, thank you, Maria Orchid, eighty-three Jefferson. First question is, I didn't know, what are the updates of the tents for the lunch program? I'm having an event, not this Saturday, next Saturday, twenty-twenty-one trunk-or-treating at Lake Papiani on October thirtieth, from nine-thirty to twelve-thirty, everybody's invited. On October sixteenth, this past Saturday, we have the Edison Boat Basin Cleanup. Like to report that we had fifty-five volunteers, and again, several bags of trash. We'd like to do this on a more permanent basis every, every couple of months. We're looking for student representatives for our green team, Edison Green Team, and student representatives for our environmental team. Wanted to know, is there an update on the esports? And October twenty-third, from one to four Harvest Fund at the Thomas Edison Center at Menlo Park, thirty-seven Charles Street. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. The tent update, Ms. Orchid, we, there was a bid opening we had, and the bids all came in higher than what we budgeted. And they weren't able to meet the needs of all the schools, so we rejected that bid. We're actually looking to get permanent structures that we could use outside our cafeterias, and we're exploring that route. I don't have a proposal or recommendation yet, but when I do, I will bring it to the finance committee, have the board, and then we'll go from there. Regarding the esports update, I debated whether today we should walk the Board of Education down to that space, because it's about eighty-five percent complete. So we hope to have, when our next board meeting is here, it'll be fully operational with kids participating in esports activities. And I would hope to bring the board down there and to show them it actually in action with students actually utilizing the games, devices, and what's going on. It's about eighty-five percent complete, is what I got from Mr. Barker, actually, this afternoon. But it's progressing nicely, there wasn't delay, as many of you may be aware, with technology issues, with getting chips and things like that, so some of the software and the hardware, we were, it was delayed in getting it installed.
Yeah, about the green team, environmental team stuff, if you can send a Dr. Breg an email, we can probably, you know, forward to the schools, look for volunteers and stuff like that, okay? Thank you. Yes, Sue?
Susan Campione, H. F. Record, just a few comments. One, we were mentioning administration at Woodrow, so I don't want to leave Nick Sakino out. He's also a vice principal at the school, so shout out to Nick. Just a question, the before and after school care, that's on the agenda. Being that there's a shortage of people to care for the kids, it's not the space, just a thought to put postings out for non-certificated paraprofessionals. I know that they've stepped up many times and done the breakfast program in the morning when they were short-staffed. So just an idea, if we need people there already in the schools, they know the kids, it might be a good alternative. Just something with the transportation, that just my thoughts, that maybe it's time we start looking outside the box. And, you know, years ago, we changed time for school, but maybe staggering sometimes, because I could tell you that I live probably four minutes from the school I work at, and it took me a half hour to get to work yesterday. The traffic is just really, really bad. So I do notice that on half-days, because there's a bigger span between the dismissal for middle school and high school, that the buses are on time and it doesn't, the traffic doesn't seem to be as bad. So, you know, I don't know, but maybe adjusting some of the times of schools might help. And the other thing I wanted to mention is on Saturday at Menlo Park School, from noon, I believe, till three o'clock, the E.T.E.A. is hosting a trunk-or-treat. And many teachers are bringing their cars decorated, and will be giving out candy, there's a DJ, a fire truck, and the kids love it, they love seeing their teachers dressed up. And so if you're not doing anything, it's supposed to be a pretty nice day to come out and, it's on Sunday, I'm sorry, not Saturday. And it would be a fun time.
This week, this week?
It's this, it's this Sunday, from noon to three, I believe, at Menlo Park.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay, yeah, thanks for suggesting before-after care program, we'll look into it, okay? So anybody else?
Yes.
Okay, it's your turn, go.
Oh, no, I said there are more people, I want to go a little bit.
Oh, you want to be the last one?
I'm sure, no, I'm sure Tony wants to speak, I want to.
No, Venk, Venk, raise his hand, Venk, come.
Good evening, everyone. I don't know, Jerry, that whether you, any questions that I'm going to ask are already answered, my apologies. I just came late because of the traffic. There are three questions that, that some of the parents would like to get answers. Number one was, couple of months back, a parent came here, and I think he addressed to Dr. Breg that his son broke his back because the baseball field was not in a good condition.
So the three, the question I asked is the, the field condition in Woodrow Wilson?
Yeah.
And the cricket, cricket team that are playing there? So Dr. Breg already addressed that, and, yes.
And being an Indian, I am full supporter of cricket, and you know, I really, one of the biggest supporter of it. The only thing is, try to choose the credible teams to get that with proper screening and others. So because we don't want to stop the access to the public grounds in a meaningful way. So those who has the wrong intent, those who wants to really cause B.O.E. more money, so should be penalized. So I think, you know, form the, you know, procedures or the processes, whichever is needed, to make sure that everybody's accommodated, but no, you know, damage to the, you know, school fields. The second one is, I think midterm for the first marking period is over. And, you know, I would like to congratulate the entire admin staff, and the teachers, and the supporting staff. And I personally, my personal experience with my friends and family is, there is a whole lot of difference of virtual versus in-person. I was skeptical of the in-person, I was not happy initially when the decision was taken. But I think, both from the physical, emotional, and other aspects, the kids are doing much better. And I know that some parents may not be happy with it, but I think I truly change my perception of remote to in-person now. I think this is what, for more than a year, not acceptable. I think I'm really thankful for the decision that has been made to make it in-person. And I think the learning curve has improved compared to last year. Last year, they got the grades, but their subject was not as much as it's supposed to be. But now this year, they're also learning very well, I think three times more than what they were learning last year. And I don't want to, you know, bring the ethical charges on anybody, but my request to the board is that let any ethical charges come in. But I think first we need to see whether that member should be able to face them and give them the explanation, whether it is real, what they believe it is. So they cannot divert everything to the law firm, I see the law firms has been hired, the lawyers has been supported. So my only question, I know the answer, is you guys have an insurance. So any Board of Ethic, Board of Ed member ethics charges filed, please try to answer yourself without using the insurance. I don't know whether insurance costs the B.O.E., you guys already paid for it, that's fine with us. But make sure that, you know, we don't want to engage lawyers and ask the school insurance pay for it. So that is something that I felt. And coming to the buses, I think buses are on time. And I think my daughter used to come ten, fifteen minutes late, and now she's on time, by three-twenty, three-twenty-five, she's at home after middle school. So it shows that they are coming on time, there are no complaints that we are seeing it. And I think, Dr. Breg, you and your team should actually pat your backs that for great work that you guys have done. I think there is still few parents that are not happy, but compared to seven thousand students and around thirty thousand parents, pretty much, there will be some people that will not be happy. But overall, I think, you know, you guys have done a wonderful job. And hopefully, you know, this momentum will continue, and, you know, past November elections. So we all will be out with this entire political mess, and we'll focus back on the school rankings, school grades. So I'm glad, one thing that, I think since I have one more minute, this board needs some discipline. And I know, I don't want to name anybody, I think collectively, you as a team. So I would like to endorse openly here for Tingle, the ex, the serviceman. And he deserves a place over here who can be a role model to this team, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to answer any questions?
Just, just one thing, I think Venk had mentioned in the beginning about the parent who spoke was referring to the baseball field. And that turf field that J.P. Stevens is, we do plan to get that up and running. And we're still waiting for the Department of Environmental Protection approvals. The initial proposal had it completed beginning of the summer, which is obviously late for the season. So we're going to see if we can get it done quicker, but we are still planning to move forward with that.
Yeah, I think Dr. Breg shared the schedule last, last time when we had a meeting. We're planned to submit the plan to the department by the end of this month. We're expecting approval in January, then we'll go through the bidding and all of that process. All right, Crystal?
I'm next, we asked a question about the ethics charges. Who's paying for it, you asked a question?
The district has the, the risk insurance, and the insurance lawyer is, depends on the issues. The insurance decide whether they want to pay for it or not. Thank you. Yeah, you can go.
I want to look my tyrants in their eyes, I want to know why Mr. B.Ralph Patel is not here. He's going for reelection and he doesn't want to show up, just like Sam Joshi, they're all the same. During my, the Board of Education special meeting for B.Ralph Patel's corruption and criminal activity, you remember that meeting, Dr. Breg? Sam Joshi's campaign tried to bribe me with five hundred signs and two thousand dollars cash. Specifically, Sam Joshi's uncle, Bimal Joshi. I want to put, I want to, that's what they claim, but why is he so ashamed of who his family is? Do your own research. So at the end of the day, I want to let them know that even though they, and they bribed me not to come in here and expose Mr. B.Ralph Patel. David Waldstein, GOP hitman, Democratic DNC, fake news, is now promoting a frivolous ethics complaint that this man filed, I filed a very real one. So, but I'll get to that in a moment. Subject, more trouble for B.Ralph Patel. Due to radical behavior in Edison Board of Education, ethics violation, B.Ralph Patel, Edison Board of Education member and running candidate, is crossing all lines, limits to win the election by wrong ways, but is caught by the judicial system. In the late July and early August, B.Ralph Patel spoke to Dr. Breg on multiple occasions for hiring another B.O.E. member's daughter as a teacher in the district in exchange for that B.O.E. member to resign from the board and withdraw from the November election. He told Dr. Breg that without the B.O.E. member in the race, his chance of winning in November twenty-twenty-one will increase a lot. Dr. Breg told him the district found another extra teacher because of enrollment changes, and this position is no longer needed. He still requested Dr. Breg to hire other B.O.E. member's daughter. Dr. Breg informed the B.O.E. president of the uncomfortable conversation he had with Burell. Edison School District has non-nebitism policy, preventing hiring current B.O.E. member's relatives. The state has a very strict policy about hiring sitting B.O.E. member's relatives. Burell was using his position as a B.O.E. member to hire someone to benefit himself. Burell? It went away. I got three minutes left, I'm going to continue on Burell. People in this town go nuts when you expose Burell. So, yeah, Burell was interfering with the hiring process and influencing his chances to win. Two minutes, it's all right, I'll come back for rebuttals, Jerry, but. One, in early August twenty-twenty-one, Edison School Board Member, Mr. B.Ralph Patel, who was running for reelection in November twenty-twenty-one, pressured Edison School District Superintendent Dr. Breg to hire the daughter of another Edison B.O.E. member, Elizabeth Conway. Ms. Conway is also running for reelection in November twenty-twenty-one. Two, Board Member Burell Patel told Dr. Breg that he wanted him to hire Board Member Conway's daughter as a teacher in Edison District in exchange for Ms. Conway's resignation as a school board member and withdraw from November twenty-one election. Mr. Burell Patel told Dr. Breg that if Ms. Conway was not a candidate in the election, it would greatly increase his chances of getting reelected. Three, Board Member B.Ralph Patel continued on at least two additional occasions to make his request to Dr. Breg about Board Member Conway's daughter. This occurred even after Dr. Breg informed him that the position Ms. Conway's daughter applied for was no longer needed due to excess staffing. Thus, in addition, the original inappropriate request, Mr. B.Ralph Patel continued to improperly pressure Dr. Breg to hire Ms. Conway's daughter, even after he was told the position was not needed. Dr. Breg was so disturbed and concerned about Board Member Burell Patel's comments and multiple requests to hire the child of another board member, he informed me, so whoever wrote this out, early August twenty-twenty-one, as board president, oh, you wrote this out, Jerry, of the uncomfortable conversations he had with Burell Patel after review of the matter. I feel it is my fiduciary obligation to report these statements and actions to the School Ethics Commission. So, are these filed? My ethics complaint got filed and pushed through, he even had to hire a high-priced lawyer. I want to let you know, on the public record, I called Burell's lawyer, and I told her that she's asking for an extension to respond to me. I give these criminals no extension. I handed Mr. B.Ralph Patel the ethics violation, and he knew he had twenty days to respond, he refused to respond. And I let this lawyer know that if she accepted money through Burell Patel's election fund, or Sam Joshi's election fund, or the Middlesex County Democratic Organization, I'm going to file ethics charges on her with the Bar Association and have her lawyer's license revoked. file ethics charges on her with the Bar Association and have her lawyer's license revoked. Thank you.
Yes, Tony. Tony Tuisqual, two Pine Street. So I want to read something to you all, just in case you haven't, haven't you, have not heard about this. So the School Ethics Commission today moved forward with a complaint against Edison School Board Member Jerry Shi for supporting a mayoral candidate, something which the ethics law prevents school board members from doing in their official capacity. In the complaint, De Pasqual charged that Shi had used his official office to support Bagia and also had campaigned for him, which would also fall under using his board position for friends. Shi filed, this is important here, Shi filed a motion to dismiss De Pasqual's complaint in August, saying that the complaint was frivolous and that he endorsed Bagia in his capacity as a private citizen. But the School Ethics Commission's action today denies Shi's claim of frivolity and sends the complaint forward to the Office of Administrative Law. So two things I want to say about this. First thing is, the reason I believe that the Ethics Commission moved it forward is because I submitted valid evidence for this. And if anybody does want to see it, I'm happy to provide it to you because I have it all. And it is valid. It's all there, and I would be happy to provide it so you can see it. Second thing is, two speakers ago said about using, you know, board members should not use the, this, the attorney or the insurance for ethics violations like this. And I just want to let everybody know that the first response about this ethics was from Mark Law, which is, which is the firm that the board uses for their lawyer. And I, yes, I do have proof of that also. So again, I think, yes, Mr. Shi, you should have taken that suggestion that the speaker said and not used taxpayers' money to defend something that you did, because that's what you're doing. You claim that I wasted taxpayers' money. The Ethics Commission disagrees with you because they move it, moved it forward so there's a decision on that. Second thing is, since I'm offering the proof, I would like to see the proof that you have against Mr. B. Ral Patel. That's what I'd like to see. I have no problem letting anybody see the proof that I offer because it's real proof. Why not show us the proof that you have? Again, the Ethics Commission, when you file these, it says on their website that they really would like you to keep the complaint quiet until it goes to them. But yet, Mr. Shi, this ethics complaint that you did was filled out, well, it was not filled out, but it was stamped by the Ethics Commission, which means that you took your name out of the form and leaked it to somebody so it could go on the internet. Again, I have no problem saying that I filed an ethics complaint, but again, you have the form going out to the public without your name on it. See, I'm not ashamed of what I do, because I have proof when I do things and I say things. Okay? So, you know, you, you, you say that, oh, and you've said this on social media, you're gonna lose. No, Mr. Shi, I haven't lost, and I won't lose, because what I do as a resident, as a citizen, it is my job to hold you all accountable. That's what our job is as residents. And I have to also bring up that I found out also that you called NewJersey.com for them to do a story on Mr. B. Ral Patel and your ethics complaint. So let me get this straight. There's an election coming up. You have a special meeting a month before the election. You make it a big, big deal. So the next ethics complaint I file, can we have a special board meeting just for that? And then you call a newspaper and you have them to do a story? And you believe that this is a valid complaint? We have no proof, number one. Number two, you called the newspaper yourself for them to do a story on this. What does that show? That shows that you are and continue to be the most political person on this board. And yes, you did. You did, because I will even tell the people, what are the proofs that I have? Four hours after your poster was put on the internet, you liked it. You liked it, which means you approved of it, because hours later is when you said you were called out for it. Yet, hours before, you liked it. So your bogus story about, oh, I didn't know about it. Well, you know what? You did know about it. And again, I have the proof, and if anybody wants to see it, no problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
You still have thirty-two seconds if you want to finish.
With leadership, with accountability, transparency, a real leader right there. Everyone should know about your corruption in town. God bless you.
Okay, so I really don't want to comment on this because ongoing investigation, but the thing that Tony accused is absolutely wrong. I did not call the newspaper, okay? I did not give the paper to anybody else. You should ask other people how many times they send the paper out for legal devices, okay? That's my comment. Thank you.
Manish Patel, two forty, Waldman Avenue. Thanks, Mohin, for tapping for me. I need the clap, because idiots like you who keep doing stupid stuff that's going on the camera, just watch your mouth and stay quiet. Jerry, two things I'll tell you. Last time when I talked about JP Stevens, Dr. Bregan did do some work, and they did get calls. I'm sure they send you the bell, how much they need for that school. That's one thing, and I thank you for that. Somebody just earlier said the school buses are coming on time, they're doing everything fine. I still would say take a couple more weeks before you tap your shoulder, because in North Edison, where I live, Waldman Avenue, there are still complaints, all right? The other thing is, Jerry, karma just followed you very fast, less than four and a half weeks. And the judge says, let's go to ethics. So learn a lesson. Mohin, you're not too far from it. It's gonna fall on your butt very soon. I know you're waiting. Mohin, I believe you are about thirty years of age.
Forty-six, actually. I just turned on October four.
Thank you very much for correcting. That's what I needed. At age of forty-six, you should understand and behave like a gentleman. Behave like a person who you've been hired. Stop being an idiot, or you go like this to people. You clap, the things you do. Jerry, can I ask you? Isn't this back and forth? And you're not stopping this?
You called me an idiot, so I'll respond to that.
Yeah, right away, the, you know what? You just prove it to the, the cameras, the people, that you are an idiot because if somebody called you an idiot, you don't answer back. You wait for your turn and you answer it. All right? So please.
Answer after you're finished.
Please. Stop taking my minutes, because then I'll request more minutes. Learn that. He was talking about a couple of things, which I liked it because he pointed out some of the great features of our country. He talked about you, Jerry, in the way B. Ral did this, B. Ral did that. Did you, as chairperson or the big boss of this BOE, there's not one person involved, there's three persons involved. Ms. Conway, did you take her statement? Did you put that on the ethics board? You haven't done it yet. And the other one question I have is, last time in JP Stevens, three people asked you a question. Did you follow the ethics? One was Tony, one was a councilwoman, I was the third one. And you say you did. You know what? You lied to the Board of Ed people, people who're sitting in JP Stevens High School, and all the parents, because you filed it three days later. And believe me, I will be taking this up again in ethics, because now I want to see that the liar caught not once, not twice, three times. Thank you very much.
I just want to remind you, when you come here accusing someone, get your facts straight, okay? Wait, listen, my turn. So the, 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 the stuff you saw is the amended complaint.
I haven't accused you of anything yet. All I accuse you of, lying. You know why? Because it's on the video, and I took that. And that is based on that, I'm filing ethics against you, because it's in the video.
Go ahead.
Okay? And then the ethics, when they take it, they stamp it, brother. So that's where you're getting wrong. Learn that. And but, my dear friend Venkitt, when he came up, he asked you a question. You have a thing called no back and forth. Why the heck were you doing it? Isn't that civil rights issue when it comes to all of us? When Tony speaks, you don't want to do it. When I speak, you don't want to do it. When Councilwoman was doing last time, you'd stopped her three times. And I have all that written down. But when Venkitt was talking, you didn't even let him finish, and you start going back and forth. I think that's his civil rights too, brother.
So watch the video yourself. The Councilwoman stopped her conversation and started the conversation. The, what I spoke to Venkitt was three of the, I think, three of the questions that I asked Dr. Bregan were from him. So when he came over, he said, I came in late, my question has already been answered. I just respond to him what I have answered. As far as the stamped date on the ethic, as the, excuse me, as far as the stamped date on the ethics complaint, that's amendment. That's amendment to the one that I filed earlier. So get your facts straight before you come over and accusing me a liar, okay? Feel free to file ethics complaints and let them tell you when the first time the ethic was filed. I actually have the email. And when the amendment was filed. Thank you very much. Okay. I don't see anyone, anyone raising hand. I don't see anyone raising a hand. Wait, wait, wait.
Yeah, yeah, he does, he does.
Wait, wait, do we have, do we, do we, wait, wait, do we have anyone who's a first-timer? Who wants to come? See none? Your turn. No, he just walked in, I didn't see him. No, 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 no. Hey, hey, I'm calling the meeting. Let him say, okay? He has his chance. Yes.
Yeah. Mr. Manish, he is responding to the question that where two kids were got injured, so I didn't want to waste their time. So that's why I asked that question, number one. So as a friend, I'm fine. Will you shut up, please? You shut up. This political broker, Mr. Tony De Pascal, a dog at Sam Joshi's house, begged for the position. He's a beggar. He really is a beggar. He stays as a security guard at mayor's office, and he begs for literally anything. He sucks anything. Doesn't matter.
Welcome, welcome, come on, come on.
That guy is a library board member, doesn't have a dignity. He doesn't have a dignity. He doesn't even have a shame. He feels proud. I don't know what kind of feeling that he get, a sadism or a psycho. When I'm asking for the kids' benefit, this guy is laughing. He's trying to question it. He make a joke. He doesn't even have a balls to question the library architect. He is there to protect Sam Joshi's architect. He's a corrupt fellow. He's a library board fellow, and this guy is asking questioning BOE.
Welcome, welcome.
Can you guys take that outside afterwards?
Welcome, welcome. Let's, let's take it outside. Let's, let's take it outside.
I didn't stop you, bro. You stop it. If they don't know about it, that guy has no right to stop me. He's trying to harass me, and you know, he's a public guy. He lost badly in the public and the BOE. Doesn't have a shame. He put his nephew in the school IT area. Doesn't have a shame. He is such a shameless guy. If you pay a hundred dollars tomorrow, he will go and vote for you. And he will go and take opposition thing for you. Such a shame to the town. He's a polarizer. He should be removed from all the positions. I don't know what Sam Joshi has seen in him to make him a library board person. I think that's all. I still have one minute, Jay.
Okay. Let's, let's, welcome, let's, let's concentrate on the school board thing.
He's harassing every time I come here. Why is this coming? I didn't go and ask, beg Sam Joshi to give me library board position.
Welcome, let's just concentrate on school issues and keep the, the, not, not getting interactions.
Yeah. If, if Mr. Bagia gave five hundred dollars, he will be Santa. The next day, moron, he's a moron. For five hundred dollars, he can be a Santa, the next minute, he can be a moron.
Hey, no plan to talk to me.
Yeah, I didn't disturb him, brother. I'm telling you. If these guys are calling legality, if these guys don't understand, I will teach them what the legality is. If he has a proof, let me, let me tell him that just because somebody admitted, just because there's a benefit of doubt, that doesn't mean that it has merit in its case. Ask him to have some patience, dignity for three months and six months till the verdict comes in. If somebody is using the school board, I don't care. If B. Ral Patel is actually stealing a sash, I don't care. If B. Ral Patel is actually, you know, helping people, I don't care. But if B. Ral Patel is helping another BOE member for political benefit, I do care. It's called nepotism. Ask him to learn what is nepotism in the first place. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jerry, what, what, why you're about saying there's these people, the Republicans, and the Republicans, that's right.
Let's, let's concentrate on the school issues.
I would order that to be right now.
You, you have your time. Come, come to the podium and speak right now.
I'm trying to say, if I want my paper. While you get your paper. You want to get my paper?
Yeah, so while he's getting his paper, let's get somebody else.
I don't need the paper. No, no, I don't need the paper.
You don't need the paper, okay.
Everything, everything Venkatta said is true. Tony De Pascal is underneath Sam Joshi's desk.
Don't, don't get into the audience, okay?
Tony De Pascal is underneath, excuse me, this is my time to speak public comments. Tony De Pascal is underneath Sam Joshi's desk, and God only knows what he's doing down there. This man sold out.
Can you keep the topic on the school board and take your personal stuff outside?
Public comments, you're stealing my time.
Take it outside.
You're hijacking my time. It's public comments.
Crystal, take it outside, take it outside.
It's a rebuttal. I'm not taking nothing outside. He needs to apologize to Sergeant David Tingle for cyberbullying, cyber harassing a military veteran, a police officer, because for doing his constitution. He doesn't agree with what David Tingle says, so he's harassing him like Sam Joshi's campaign harasses many residents, like Sam Joshi's campaign is using the Middlesex County Prosecutor's Office, possibly members of Edison Police Department, to maliciously prosecute me in hopes to keep me arrested.
Please be careful when you accuse something.
Excuse me, stop interrupting my time, sir.
No, no, you're accusing people. Just hold it off.
It's my time. It's my time.
Yes, I said it.
You know? I don't know if you're doing it to me and Venkatta, you know, why you're hostile to us and you let these guys get away with it. The last time this man said racist comments, anti-Chinese comments with Fares Joshi, this is the same people that was there when they tried to bribe me to keep my mouth shut and exposing Mr. B. Ral Patel. These are criminals. These are mafia members. And, you know, they're going around threatening members of the community, intimidating members of the community. And think about this. Sam Joshi has the auto win. A piece of dog crap can win on the Democratic Party line. And they're still going out and targeting people. He's gonna win anyways, and he's targeting people. He's targeting the Tingle family to remove them as committee people, Edison Democratic Organization. They're targeting me because of the campaign commercials I'm doing against Sam Joshi. When is it gonna stop? Who's next? If they're targeting military veterans and Edison Police Officers, forget about me. You know, people just don't even care when I'm getting targeted. When you, when you're so powerful, you can target a military veteran, veteran and Edison Police Officer. You got the Middlesex County Prosecutors to do whatever you want, because these are the people that appoint, point them to their positions. Are you aware they put a warrant out for my arrest because over ninety days ago, I called somebody a princess who was harassing me during my campaign commercial over at Yanusi to show the contaminated property that you, that you Democrats have, have been covering up for decades? God bless Venkatta. God bless Venkatta. God bless Venkata, God bless Venkata.
Okay, Tony, your turn.
Tony Tuskwal, Pine Street. So, I, I would just like, maybe Mr. Shi or Dr. Bragan to, to clear something up. Because as far as I know, a resident can't hire anybody for the school district, like that's, you know, the, the administration does the interviewing and then the board approves it. And I keep hearing a lot that I was, I gave my nephew a position in the school district. And I, again, I'm, I'm not sure how I was able to do that because I don't hire anybody in the school district. So, you know, if, if nobody wants to answer it, that's fine, but again, the mystery to me is, how does a resident hire somebody in the school district? So, that would be my question. And, and, and if, again, if there's no answer, that's fine because I, I know the answer, but I think the public should know maybe how the process does work in hiring people. So, thank you.
Okay. Dr. Bragan, I want to say a couple things about our policy and the, the state policy regarding, uh, school board members.
Yeah, the hiring of all candidates for every job in, in the district goes out to an advertisement, typically via the applicant track process. And then there's a, a committee put together that's going to go through those applications and then put together an interview process. Typically, it's a couple rounds of interviews. And then the final round usually culminates with myself and Dr. Alderelli, and then if we think the candidate is viable for the position, we recommend to the full board. And we go to closed session tonight, we'll talk about personnel recommendations for Tuesday's meeting. And, and that's the process, and that's typically the way it goes for every candidate, and we have not deviated from that since I've been here in December of 2019.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes.
Dr. Bragan, would you elaborate on that? Because last time when I spoke to you, we had issues with some teachers. And you said, we need to hire more teachers, anybody you know from J. P. Stevens, uh, kids who would like to work, let me know. Now, can any of your board member requests, if they know somebody saying this child or that child is smart, can you look into it? Can you do that? And if you could, if they hired, are they in the same process that you hired them? Thank you.
Just writing down the notes here because I'm doing both duties tonight, sorry about that. Can I respond to that?
Yes, please.
Yeah, absolutely, Manish. Anyone can make a recommendation to me, and people often do that. Hey, I, I know this guy's a really strong candidate, why don't you give him a look? Or, and that comes often from colleagues, fellow superintendents, sometimes from board members, sometimes town council members, sometimes from community members, sometimes from people that I've met in my career, home 33 years in the field. And for that process, I tell everyone the exact same question. I'm the superintendent of schools, I can't get anyone a job. However, I can get everyone an interview. And I have granted interviews for people who request. Manish, if you came up to me and said, hey, Dr. Bragan, I know this guy, he's really strong, I think you should give him a look, I'd give him a look. I'd get him an interview and I, I think that's fair. And a lot of times, there's some of the most highly capable candidates that we got that are currently working in our system came that way. But it, in, in no way does that mean that somehow the process wasn't, uh, done correctly because everyone gets the same process. And if you get to the interview, you go through the interview process, if you get to the second interview, you go through the second interview. Typically, for a teaching, um, position, you then have to do a demonstration lesson in front of a number of administrators on the committee, and then the final interview typically comes to Dr. Alderelli and myself, and that process is the same for everyone. And we've worked really hard, I know I have, I've only been here since December of 19, to endorse that policy with everyone that I can't get anyone a job, but I can get you an interview. And then if you get it from there, fair enough, and, and the board has supported that, and I think that's what we've done, at least since I've been here.
Anybody else? Any other public comments? See none? Can I have a motion to close public comments?
Motion.
Do I have a second? Okay. Mohin and Shannon. All right, so, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so, now we're going to go into closed session. I'll just give Dr. Bragan to write the notes, then.
You want to read that, closed session?
You want, you want me to read it or you want me to read it?
Yeah, I think I need to, right? Whereas, Section 8 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975 permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas, the public body is of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist now, therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of the Township of Edison, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey as follows. The public shall be excluded from discussion of and action upon the here and after specified subject matter, the nature, the general nature of the subject matter to be discussed is as follows. Attorney-client privileged discussion regarding litigation brought by former employees, Edison Wetlands Association contract, student matters, ETEA grievances, perk unfair labor practices, personnel matters. It is anticipated at this time that the above stated subject matter shall be made public at such a time as needed for nondisclosure, no longer exists. This resolution shall take effect immediately. At this time, I need a motion, sorry.
Yeah, can I have a motion on that?
Motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay.
Let me just take a roll call real quick.
Mohin and Shannon.
Got it? Roll call for the motion to go into closed session. Ms. White?
Yes.
Ms. Madigore?
Yes.
Ms. Podolsky?
Yes.
Dr. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Conway?
Sure.
Ms. Pang?
Yes.
Mr. Mohin Patel?
Yes.
And Mr. Shi?
Yes. We do not expect, yeah, we do not expect to come back with any actions, so I'll see you guys on Tuesday. Thank you.